I see that it's 6:02. And Brandon will not be here tonight, he's already informed us of that. So, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Brandon is not here. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So, moved?
Second?
And Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number three is district recognitions. Do we have district recognitions?
We don't tonight.
Okay, I look forward to that next time then.
Yep.
This meeting is going to be pretty straightforward by the look of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, if you go a lot faster, you can just give the votes like I did last week.
Yeah. And just a little bit about that, it's going to be good practice. I'm going to be gone, I'll mention it later, for Truth and Taxation in that meeting, so you're up.
We'll face the vote now.
The comment I found most poignant was, we have a lot less time for discourse when we're trying to run the meeting, so that I liked. Reports and information items is number four, and we'll start out with Student Council, please.
Hi, my name is Hunter Gargus, and I'm treasurer on Student Council. And I'll start off with our budget. It's roughly at $2,600 right now, it's a homecoming, and a recap on homecoming. So, for the junior party, we had the idea to use Johnny Cash tree, he is the founder there, we had Billy Tom, the hot dogs and hamburgers. And we serve about 600 to 700 people for lunch. And we're hoping to donate our extra hot dogs that we have at the freezer back to Pat, because they originally donated 500 to us, and so we're just trying to see if they'll take them back. And some upcoming events that we have, we have a new student lunch next Wednesday, so to see the new students, see how they're doing. We'll get fried pizza from Rapperdy's, and so just check up on them. And we also have roadside cleanup later in the month. And also, we have a fall convention, probably around in Saratoga or Sartre Rapids, sometime in November, date hasn't been determined yet. And we also have a food drive competition coming up, that'll be towards the end of November, I think that's the sixteenth or twenty eighth of November. And that'll be a competition between the advisories, so we just try to see who, which advisory can collect the most cans, and then they get probably one of their Rapperdy's pizza party, I guess. So, that's about it. If you guys have any questions.
Are there any questions for the Student Council representative? Susan?
With your food drive, are you going to be collecting any cash?
We haven't talked about it too much. We were trying to aim mostly towards canned foods, because we didn't want to get into a conflict with the summer pudding, like really small, cheap brown noodle packets.
Sure.
And then that being equivalent to one versus like canned soup. Just trying to keep everything square, so canned soup would be one, I guess.
Just to look at, you have two different things that you're looking at, the competition or helping the food shelf. If you were going to help the food shelf, they always want the cash more, because they can buy more things with the money.
Okay.
So, if you're going to just look at it, who's going to win, then that's a different thing that you're looking at. So, are you helping or are you competing?
We're hoping to help.
Okay.
Didn't want to have to pick a competition, but we feel like that's kind of necessary.
It's just something to take back to the Student Council, and to kind of gear them into when you're helping out a place, what do they want as help?
Yeah.
So, on that, you can carry on for everything.
Yeah, we'll contact the food shelf. Yeah, I don't forget, the Student Council.
I'd like to make a statement, if I might.
Well, Kurt, go ahead.
I think the Student Council, and I said this to a number of people, you have the best homecoming you've ever been experienced in school. And you set the standard so extremely high. I think it's a sad thing, it's an extraordinary success, and we're mostly drawn there, there in the Republican, like you said. It was a physical problem. I mean, and a good call on the entertainer, which I heard was your idea.
Yeah, it sounded breezy a few times, I'd be really pissed.
Yeah. I think people enjoyed that music, and then as we get our facility more dialed in to accommodate the events at, what was it back at? Can I sit down?
Thank you.
You and your chair.
Thank you.
I am so sorry, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, go ahead, Susan.
I've heard a lot of good also, I'm just wondering if there is a way of not having the conflict with Brainerd. Things are scheduled the same time as Brainerd, Winter Ball is also the same night as Brainerd, Homecoming was the same day as Brainerd. There's a lot of, this is a very local area, and I'm thinking that it might be a good idea to look at not competing for that, because people really want to go to both, and you may have a larger draw having it not competing with Brainerd.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Chair, I was just making out on that 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 would be more athletic director.
Because I just kind of guessed.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just a thought to bring that to.
Yeah, Brainerd's free to change their date anytime they want.
I, it might be in their time, they could fly to the moon.
I think the challenge is, there's only one, there's only one game that he works next year.
Yeah.
And it's furrow, we're moving a tournament just to get, do you have a chance to have Saturday, or?
I heard we had a hard time getting people to play it.
Wow, you have a hard time getting people to play it on Saturday.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're kind of a mercy in this year, you know, they have one good point I don't want to be willing to, and it was because it draws us apart. So, next year, it's lying to confirm the same exact, we did, and so only we can even, we do try to take it into account, but unfortunately, and the same with, they set up the winter formal is going to be the same date for the next five years, only because every time we move it, there's so much conflict with sporting schedules, that some days we have to have to go, there's some days on road or somewhere, and then they're no venue. So, we're locked in five years, the second Saturday of January.
Of January?
Yes.
Anyone else? Well, Valerie?
I was just going to say, I hear a lot of really positive comments about having the homecoming game on Saturday, because people can come back, and who don't live right here in town, and they bring their families, and it's a lot easier to bring younger families on a Saturday than it is a Friday night game. So, you know, I know it's always this conflict of which do you prefer, but I hear a lot of good comments. I wasn't able to attend homecoming this year, I did last year when we changed it for the first year to Saturday, and I thought it was great. I mean, my family's.
No wonder why attendance was down.
Yeah, the Wallheens. Well, okay, to be fair, yeah, no, there wouldn't have been any hot dogs left if the Wallene family had been able to attend.
I'm sorry, Valerie, I apologize.
Well, it's not funny, because the reason many people were absent was because of James Wallene's funeral.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, it's not a laughing matter, and I wouldn't want anyone to think that, you know, we were making fun at that expense.
That was not my inference, that was not my inference.
But, to infer that my family would finish off the hot dogs is probably accurate, it's my family alone. But, anyway, you know, so I appreciate the struggle you guys have in scheduling that, but I also want you to know that a lot of people appreciate having a Saturday game as well.
Anyone else?
Just if I might, Mr. Chair, one comment. Hunter, thank you to you and the rest of your team, paying attention to the students who are new to Pequot Lakes as a Student Council is commendable, and thank you, thank you, and please share that thanks with the rest of the crew.
So, that is the new student lunch, it is people that are new to the district?
Yes.
Okay, great.
One from the high school.
Okay.
As I'll say, if I can talk to the Student Council, they're going to send it to middle of the year.
This is a great gesture, so thank you.
So, the take is, Mr. Gargus, you guys are doing a great job, we say it every time you come here, we do appreciate all your efforts, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep. That leads us to the superintendent report.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items tonight. First of all, for our board, I want you to know that last Wednesday, October 14th, while our students were having their first day of fall break, our teachers and staff were here working extremely hard all day. The morning was a time led by our building principals and the school leadership teams, focusing on the Marzano framework and setting professional learning goals for the year, school improvement plan goals, and tightly aligned, that worked to our strategic plan. So, that was kind of the morning half spent doing that, and then in the afternoon, our teachers were working very hard, under the leadership of Mr. Johnson and our curriculum leads, on the curriculum library. So, I mean, it was a, it was a long day of hard cerebral work. And it's funny, I always chuckle that when we teach all day and are doing the chaos of instruction, it's just such a different rhythm than sitting down with a team of colleagues and focusing hard on curriculum work. That's tiring in a whole different way, and you just carry it differently. But, it was very productive, and that continues to be a key resource for us, moving our strategic plan forward. Update on negotiations, we do now have an official tentative agreement with our teachers, and we'll be able to approve that contract next month in November. As you, as we've communicated both in the paper and to the board and other venues, the schedule itself increases .25 percent in year one and .5 in year two for our teacher contract, but two career increments were added for those who are in the district for 20 and 25 years, as longevity steps. Overall impacted district budget is about 6.3 percent over two years. So, we'll review that again when we approve the budget, but that process is coming to a close. And we are also very close to a tentative agreement, not quite, but very close, with Local 284. They will be on site tomorrow, working with Jenny much of the day, tightening up numbers, and getting that different compensation model tightened up to fall inside what we've budgeted for. So, I would say both employees, employee groups have maintained a commitment to a positive culture, a productive process, and I know I speak on behalf of the board when I say thank you to those two employee groups for that. And that commitment to maintaining a culture is of utmost importance, importance to our work. On the concurrent enrollment issue that I updated the board on more at length last month, I want to say thank you for supporting a resolution that went to the Minnesota School Boards Association. About 30 other districts also sent a resolution from their school boards, and so what we know is it will be considered on December 6th at the MSBA Board of Delegates, for then being included in the legislative platform for this legislative season that kicks off in January. I also want to let everyone know that I did testify on October 8th at a joint hearing of higher education committees, along with about 40 other principals, superintendents. There was a few students in the room. Some of the most unique testimonies came from college professors themselves, who were very clear that in the programs they run, what's being taught is of the highest caliber, and some of those classrooms are, most of those classrooms are being taught by teachers who don't have a master's degree in a particular discipline. And it works because of the oversight of those professors, who work closely with those teachers. So, that was a real unique piece of testimony that added flavor to the day. It's made, it's been made very clear, I think, by everyone testifying and being part of this advocacy process, that this will have a big impact, and it'll impact outstate Minnesota probably at a much more acute level than in the metro, or even in large districts where they have more, more size, just in scale, to be able to specialize the education of teachers. That said, the advocacy is gaining traction not only in Minnesota, but also in Indiana and Nebraska. The Higher Learning Commission is hearing about this from more than just Minnesota, but it is a slow-moving issue, and I don't expect to be able to come back here and update you every month on progress. I think it's, it's a, it's moving at the pace of molasses. In the local level, we're focusing on both advocating on this, and also talking about what do we do if nothing changes? And how do we, say that again?
Is it moving the right way?
That's really hard for me to answer. The Higher Learning Commission doesn't answer to us, all we can do is advocate, and are they receptive? Yes. Have they sent people to come and listen? Yes. Does that mean they'll change their mind? It's anybody's guess. But, I did, I am grateful that I was able to go and be part of the process, and see the players involved, and advocate on behalf of our students. I think it's a really important issue for Pequot Lakes students here, so. Then just a couple of activities, celebrations, and dates and things for the community. Congratulations to our football team, I think we've all heard that they had a great victory over Park Rapids on Saturday. The team now plays at 8:00 PM in the Fargo Dome on Thursday of this coming week. People can sign up for a fan bus if they want to participate in that, that's in the high school office, the fan bus tickets are $25. As a result of that success, our secondary conferences for both buildings have been moved from Tuesday and Thursday of this week, to Tuesday of this week, and Tuesday of next week. So, it's, it's just too much fun to go to Fargo. So, we're going to all go cheer on our team and do conferences a week from Tuesday, both Tuesdays. And to add to that, our elementary conferences, for those who are not, who have elementary students, are November 5 and 10, so those are a couple weeks out yet. Our girls tennis team is playing this afternoon, I don't have an update, they didn't go to the championship for sections, that's too bad, but we want to commend them for a good season. And our cross-country section meet is October 30th, and the girls volleyball team kicks off their playoff season on the 29th, I believe. So, we have lots of great things going on, and good luck to our fall athletes who are still marching on in their, in their tournaments.
Thank you Superintendent Lindholm.
You are welcome.
Any questions for Superintendent Lindholm? Valerie?
Actually, if I could make a couple of comments, I reached out to Senator Carrie Rude, and in relationship to the concurrent enrollment issue, recognizing that our state doesn't control the Higher Learning Commission, but that there may be avenues that we can create, creative, we need to have creative solutions in the event this is the requirement for our college and the schools program. I think that piece is probably an important piece for all of us, as we're moving forward the next 10, 15 years, as, you know, an overall piece of the education of our students. She suggested that it would be beneficial to the people who are in charge of the committee, that emails would be helpful, so anybody who wanted to reach out to Senator Rude via email, and just make a note that, you know, this is a very important issue to a district like ours, that would be very beneficial to her in advocating for us and on our behalf. She had mentioned that she had heard from other districts, other school districts as well, regarding concerns and the impact. So, if anybody who believes in this program and would like to reach out to our state representative, Senator Rude is certainly open to receiving those emails, and will forward them on to the right people who are listening. The other piece, I think, maybe I didn't realize when I was talking to her, is I just hadn't processed it through far enough, you know, larger districts, as Mr. Lindholm indicated, have more resources of teachers who have master's degrees in certain disciplines. Not only that, there's a lot of competition, a lot of times, in those districts, and so, not that there isn't the same level of competition here, but there is a lot of competition in metro districts, and so, a lot of times, people go ahead and complete their master's degree to try and have an edge in, in being hired or looked at. So, again, the pool of teachers, it seems like this has less impact in the larger districts within our state than it would have in districts that are smaller. So, the third piece then is, this next legislative session is a short session, and so they're looking to try and resolve, come up with creative alternatives. If anybody has ideas, I mean, shoot them to Mr. Lindholm, and he can forward them on to the appropriate groups that he's working with. So, she's certainly open to hearing from us with any ideas or options that we might think would be viable for our district.
Follow-up?
Yeah, just respond to that. First of all, thank you to you for reaching out to her, and I appreciate that. Also, for everyone to note, Representative Heinzman is on the Higher Learning Commission Committee in the legislative branch. So, he's a local guy and listening to this, and he's, he's on that committee itself. So, both of them would probably be all ears on the issue, so.
Yeah, this is a pretty important program for us. My first child was PSEO, my next two are CIS. I believe that, you know, this is something that Chip and a lot of other people put a lot of work into to get this puppy going, this program going, and it would be a shame to, at the last minute, in my opinion, have these restrictions or requirements put on. You know, a master's is one thing, but it's the extra credits as well, that is kind of the crux of the biscuit. It's my understanding that the policy kicks in in 2017, and whatever college you're affiliated with, their accreditation cycle dictates when we are on the hook.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Does everyone understand what Mike just said? So, it really gives us about four to five years to have every teacher kind of lined up with this policy, that's what we're talking about. And to give a little, shed a little light on what Valerie said, I think, big versus small, if you're, just take a, let's pull a teacher out, Dan Modis, he teaches CIS government, right? In social studies, Dan, in order to teach CIS courses across the board, would have to have 18 credits beyond a master's in government, econ, psych, those are all separate disciplines inside the umbrella of social, of social studies. So, if you're a large high school with seven teachers that teach social studies, you can spread that burden out.
Right.
Right. If you're Pine River or Aiken, and you have two social studies teachers, you can't do it, there's just no way. Chip and I have many times said, we are just big enough to be able to pull most of this off, but if we were even, you know, 30 kids a class smaller, we would, we wouldn't be able to do the A degree at all. And this frankly will undermine our ability to do the A degree. So, you're absolutely right, Director Wallene, about how it impacts outstate at a more acute level than a large school.
You know, we had the Paul Bunyan Co-op, how about the CIS Co-op?
That's a great point that you just made. The Region Five superintendents are in conversation about how exactly that, how do we start getting very creative about how we pool teachers for teaching these kinds of things, and share, and there's more to come there. I think it's going to take us a while to work those kinks out, but believe me, we're already kicking some of those around. Yep.
All right.
Thanks.
If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to 4C, which is Eagle View School Improvement Plan, and Melissa, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to come and share about what's happening at Eagle View. In honor of my staff that are sitting here working on Marzano, my target for you tonight is for you to know what we're doing, what we've done, and where we're going this year. And it's quite a bit of information included into one document, so at any time you want to talk about it further, I'd be happy to do so. But it gives you the big overview of all that's happening, and there is a great deal of positive work for students happening at Eagle View. This document was out last year, and I presented it to my leadership team. We all had to wrap our heads around what does this look like, and what's our role in it, and we're the foundation of everything that comes after us. So, we looked at this, and I'll be honest, there was a lot of learning last year, and when we came back to it this spring, we analyzed it with a little bit different lens, and you'll see that as our goals change, from last year they were a little more broad, to this year they're much more specific in their window. So, keeping that in mind, let's be wrapped our mind around what this is and where we're going. Celebrations, this one's a little bit easier to see on your screens than the large screen. We are a celebration-eligible school based on our achievement and proficiency on the MCAs. From last year, we also were celebration-eligible last year. We did apply and did not get accepted, we will apply again. We have much to celebrate even further than what I applied in yesterday. Our achievement is increasing, we held steady or increased, and our gap is starting to close. Those are pieces of a puzzle that we're continuing to work on. Our math scores were a new standard for this profession, which is well above the state average, and that is consistently incrementally rising every single year. Last year, we implemented Wear Up Life Days, everybody likes that day, it's T-shirt and jeans day, that's always positive. There's a ton of blue in the building, celebrating all that is PBIS, all that is Pequot Lakes, all that is Eagle View. We did school-wide celebrations as students earned of them through their positive choices, and we ended the year with the Black Party, and that was a fun way to wrap up and celebrate that community spirit that is an elementary school. We made headway in our Marzano awareness for the staff, that was new. There was a lot of new for the staff last year, I was new, Marzano was new, PLCs were new, there was a great deal of new, so we needed to develop our language and how we use that. And our teams worked tirelessly and positively, working on standards in curriculum. We have five and six teachers teaching the same things, we needed to have some consensus as to what the standards mean, and what's our general expectation as a team, before we could really develop basing guides. And that took an expensive amount of our year to make sure that no matter which classroom your child is in, your child is going to have a guaranteed consistent curriculum. And that was an incredible amount of heavy lifting last year. We completed that in math, not some of that had been started the year before, and we also worked on it in meeting as far as whole group instruction. So, we delved into some giant pieces of a curriculum puzzle that allow for all teachers to have knowledge and consistency. So, it's four lines, but there's a great deal of work, and hours of work, and then the entire Eagle View staff, the magician said the entire, I would say 90% of the Eagle View staff also worked in June on curriculum, which was an impressive goal. Superintendent Lindholm asked me if my staff was ever going to go home for the summer. Our values, going back to the original document that he created as a district before I arrived, where our core values were, we kind of narrowed those down as a school, again, I apologize for the one side being difficult to read, as to what is our value, and the picture on it is what I want you to notice, we did a team building element as a staff at Trail Lake Camp on the Thursday of Workshop Week, and we did all sorts of team building, standing on tarps as one team, holding on up with your feet, can't touch the ground, tug of war, but not really tug of war, getting in line with your eyes closed, you couldn't talk, you had to use different devices to really wrap our heads around teamwork a little bit more in depth. It was quite amusing, to be honest. Snap and ask to go back and paintball, and I think they have some fun they want to have behind it. But it really continued the discussion we had on the Monday of Workshop Week on the Five Voices, respecting that we do things differently, and that we all talk and perceive things differently, and how we need to respect that in our teams and work together. So, this is where our teams kind of collectively wrap their heads around what our values are. And all of it, the focus rolls back to the stuff for kids, and I think that's a strength and a celebration of every single member of Eagle View, is that really, it's your students, it's the kids, and this community and area that are the primary focus. These were the goals I shared with you last year, and I have to admit, I agree with them, I chuckled, because they weren't overly detailed, but there was a great deal of learning and data points that I needed to be able to move us a little bit forward with the leadership team. So, I'm going to move to the next slide, which breaks each one down a little bit bigger. Our first one was to continue to review and evolve a multi-tiered systems of support, that's the new term for response to intervention, RTIA used to be called, the state's now moved it to a multi-tiered systems of support, because it's for all students, no matter if you're a student who needs enrichment, or if you need, you know, extensions, or you need that extra remediation, basically, academic, social, or emotional. Last year, we served 27% of students at Eagle View in some form of intervention. That's a great percentage of students who particularly needed a little extra boost, or what we call a double dose, either in reading or math, that was either with the intervention staff, or with some of our Title I terras, and we saw a definitive need even further with literacy, that seems to be our greatest need. So, for '15, '16, we were able to start interventions our first week of school, so that second week of school, when we were in, interventions began with students who needed them last year. And that's too good, true, that's all because of the team that had looked at data and we started rather than waiting five to six weeks for that piece. Our focus is really looking at the primary grades and literacy. We're supposed to reevaluate their grade according to the state, so we need to make that our primary focus, but we don't want to not support the students who haven't had that. So, we're still stretching ourselves to those third and fourth grades, but we really want to target kindergarten, first grade, second grade. We interviewed with kindergarten heavily, and I'll show you that data later, and we've sent 90% of our kindergartners to first grade on level. Many, almost all of them were where they needed to be by December of last year. We're using push-in, which means intervention teachers go into classrooms, and we're also using pull-out for certain skills, so we're utilizing all the pieces. We added another interventionist. We had two pairs who chose to lead Eagle View for other curriculum opportunities, so we decided we wanted to prioritize putting another certified teacher into the team. So, the interventionist consists of, for literacy, it's Renee Barnaby, Terry Thompson, and Julie Benson now, and Matt. Benson now, and Matt is still coming to check. So that is our intervention team. Looking at what we still need to develop, tier two and tier three interventions for more of the behaviors is where we need to focus next, for those students who need some more support, and we're still working on the data analysis. So when I looked at that original goal, I thought, hmm, that was a little vague. Here's where we're going. In addition to that, we're looking at how to personalize learning, and we're going to utilize that through keeping what's true to Eagle View, keeping what's historically outstanding in the literacy, the Litcollab framework. But we're going to go back and retrain and get that common vocabulary and procedures established by using a Jan Richardson guided reading framework. It honors everything that's already been done here. It honors the investment you made in Litcollab several years ago and all the training, but it allows us to put some specifics in beneath the needs of our students, one piece of which is a word study, the other piece is a guided writing in a guided reading group at their level. So those are some different pieces. That is something new, but it's not completely new, but it is different. And then we're also using STAR and CAC COGET data to identify students who need those interventions and extensions. So this page that you're looking at is actually a part of this year's improvement plan. So instead of that one, we have this component right here. And again, we're continuing to look at each grade level for that data. This was Goal Two. Next year, this one is all tied to Marzano and basically our proficiency on the state assessment. I had written the quote, consistency and collaboration are the keys to closing our gaps, and they truly still are our key, and we're continuing that work. When we look at our MCA data from last year, our math proficiency for both third and fourth were eighty-six percent, well above the state average. Reading was at seventy percent. Seventy-six percent was fourth grade, which held from third grade to fourth grade. And third grade is the first year they take it, so we averaged at a seventy-three percent overall. If remember, I shared that twenty-seven percent of Eagle View was in interventions last year, that if you add those two numbers together, there's our hundred percent. So we're now able to provide interventions for the students who most need them. The graph to the right is the state NMR, multiple measures rating, that shows our proficiency on state tests, our growth and our achievement gap. And you'll notice we still have work to do on closing our gap, and that is where our interventions continue to focus. How we meet the needs of those students who still struggle, and we want to meet them early. When we looked at our data as a leadership team last spring, we were curious. Did the MCA data, the seventy percent, and that seventy-six percent, is that indicative of our other tests that we use in our district? So we looked at our Fontis and Pennell benchmarking, and when we looked at it, basically every grade level showed growth over time, which was our SIP goal. But within that piece of data and our STAR data, which was new to us last year, we recognized that the percentage of students who weren't proficient across the building were approximately twenty to twenty-seven percent of the building. So all of our assessments are telling us the same thing. Maybe not the same student every time, but when we look at our data, it's all pointing to what we need to do. STAR was new to us, so it took us a little while to completely understand how that works differently from NWDPA, and I can thank Renee Barnaby because she's here. She is my STAR assessment guru, and I appreciate all of her insight. So from all of the data we analyzed, we made our goal for basically looking at how do we want proficiency to look at Eagle View from early childhood through fourth grade. We added an early childhood staff member to the leadership team of Eagle View because we feel that that's another piece that we need to be seamless, the students coming in for preschool all the way through, how do we make consistent? And you'll notice our accountability goals are much more detailed this year. Our goal is seventy-five percent of students needing or exceeding, and math is at eighty-eight percent. We want to incrementally grow to fifty percent every year moving forward, and that's where we're currently at. And again, this is part of the twenty fifteen sixteen. Goal Two also included professional learning teams. PLCs have been utilized in the district before, and part of the challenge of working as a collaborative staff is also consensus of we all want to do our thing. And teaching used to be your sideline, taught in your room, by yourself, did your own thing, and that is really how it's changing. Last year, we started our professional learning team focused by needing thirty minutes a week to just get our mind back from what it meant to work together to look at curriculum, to look at instruction, that it wasn't planning field trips. It wasn't that. It was looking at data and student achievement. From there, leadership team members led their grade levels and their teams to developing math and reading whole group lesson pacing guides, which are published on the digital curriculum library. And then they created goals and scales for some of the math standards, and those are also published. That's an incredible amount of work, just in addition to recognizing the standards. So we wanted to celebrate those discussions and further develop our teamwork and collective effort. We're continuing our growth in Marzano. We started our year by listing learning targets for math, so hopefully your students are coming home telling you what they learned in their math lesson through their I can statements. It's fun to do that, and if you happen to be at Eagle View in the classroom, feel free to check for that on the walls. We're starting in math as our primary focus. We're going to continue that out towards reading and writing as we develop our fidelity. We don't want to go too fast. We want to go slow, to go fast, as Mr. Lindholm says, but we want to make sure we're doing it with that of our students. Grade levels have just begun meeting in PLTs again. They're continuing their growth this year on guided reading and also on writing. Those two components are where they're focusing, as well as Marzano and goals and skills. So this is another component of this year's school improvement plan. The last goal last year was to create a safe and respectful school through PBIS, classroom meetings on character education, anti-bullying, and social skills. We're continuing that by developing two and, or tier two and tier three. Basically, what that means is tier one is when I mean Nelson goes in and does a social skills lesson for the whole class. Tier two is when she meets with a small group of students who need support for something else, just for themselves or individually, friendship skills, something in that component. Tier three is more one-on-one intervention component, when we really need to practice our skills so that we are successful students. So we haven't developed those as thoroughly, and that is our next level to do. The last piece of the SIP for this year, based on our operations plan, was partnerships and communication. We want to be more systemic and more smooth, would be the expectation, when we're talking about emergency protocols. Eagle View's a big building. Last year, we had two emergency training sessions in there, and they pointed out some areas in which we can make things even safer, but even more fluid as we looked for those emergency components. So we're going to continue to work on that. The second one is communicating from school to home through some form of newsletter. Many of you who have students in Eagle View have been either getting emails, newsletters, email home, paper copies, but the expectation is that one comes home a month. Some teachers do it weekly, some do it twice a month, but that that information on upcoming projects, assignments, and activities are coming to you in a more timely fashion, in a regular fashion. And the last piece was developing some school-wide systemic communication tools. The red take-home folder is new this year, and it's a homework folder that every student has, so no matter what grade your child is in, you can look for the red folder and know that's where the homework will be, not blue, green, different grade levels, it's all the same. Reading minutes and homework, we've asked for the expectation for the Rocket Reader goals to be done as a priority to support our practice, just as all of our sports practice every night. If we learn how to do skills at school, but we don't practice them outside, we don't improve. So wanting to prioritize that support. And then we're also recognizing students through positive postcards home from classroom teachers and all staff in the building. So wanting to continue to building that positive network partnership. The picture to the right is the picture of our September Pride Keepers that we just celebrated. They used to be STAR students every week, and we wanted to make this a little more of a celebration, so we went to what's called Pride Keepers. They're celebrated once a month, and we have a reward time, there's a special water bottle they receive as a chance for them to be recognized, and in addition, we celebrate a Rocket Reader every month, student who met their reading goals, because you might meet your reading goal, but you may not always have your Pride Keeper. So we wanted to make sure we still celebrate students so they have that opportunity to have positive recognition. None of this is possible without my leadership team at Eagle View. It is a large group of individuals who present ideas, they question, they provide excellent feedback, and at times we even pull the reins back and say, we're not ready to go forward. They are my barometer to the rest of the building. And those members all stay the same, for the exception of Kayla Reed stepped on first kindergarten, and we added Kathy Sapsburg from early childhood. The bottom is basically what you'll see on every leadership team document that we do that talks about what's our mission, what's our vision, what are our norms, what are our needs, and then what are our beliefs. And last but not least, a thank you to you for investing in our staff, in our students. Without the leadership team and the curriculum leads, we would not have been able to create math pacing guides, reading pacing guides, and really be addressing the fundamentals that are leading Eagle View forward in order to help each student's personal learning strengthen and have them reach their ultimate achievement. The picture at the bottom is the one we took on one of our host日周日，where everyone was in blue. That is all six hundred members of the school plus all of the staff into the faculty. So if you ever wondered how it should fit in that building, in that space, but we want to thank you for challenging us to, for providing the best educational experience for our children. The last thing we will do that is our task, we start educational foundations for them so we can send them off to Mr. O'Neil and the middle school staff, and then further to Mr. Rankin and the high school staff with their gaps not existing. So that would help them.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments?
I, I, I'm Mr. Chair, I'll start. I guess that, yeah, I read this through, and this is impressive. I hope it's going the way that you want it to, seemingly is. I mean, it's a, it's a good report, but I get the sense that it's going the way that you want it to, the way you want it to, correct?
It's moving along. Every day we get a little bit further. We accomplished more last year than anticipated, and that's through the hardworking efforts of the staff. Literacy is the easiest thing to say you're going to change, it's the hardest thing to change. And so with their work and their dedication...
It's always one of the biggest concerns we have when we start, and it's just, we're going to get biased, and you're getting good for you.
Kim?
Just a quick question. Another COGET has changed. Is it, what grade are all students taking?
Second graders take the COGET, all of them taking it, and approximately end of February, early March.
Oh, I'm aware of that. Everybody was just starting COGET.
The COGET is a cognitive abilities test that we give to each second grader in February or March of the year. We utilize that data to look at, can they handle accelerated learning in third and fourth grade? It's one of the pieces of data we look at along the STAR to coordinate, because you always want to triangulate data whenever you're utilizing something, so it's actually a one-time hygiene. But it tells us if a child has some of the strong cognitive abilities in quantity or other areas. So whether they're stronger math area or stronger reading, or they might need that extra extension.
I think just, yeah, history for the board, that COGET was what we started with when we were clustering a number of years ago. So that's changed since then.
And we do use that in order to help facilitate groupings, and we look at which students need that extra multi-tiered systems of success on the other end. Not students who need to be at front to grade level, but those that are already there, and we want to continue to be able to.
Do parents get that information?
They do. The report was sent out at the end of the year last year. I'm guessing I accept kids who like to... I did it, just because I know it changed, and it's something we do. And those requests did come in towards the end of the year, so we just kind of went the fourth quarter.
Can I add to that, just to kind of affirm, Kim, where you're going with that? We started using it actually when we felt there was a need to, and that, I think it was the year before I came. And the big switch we made under Lori Wigg's leadership was to give it to all second graders, as a screener for all second graders. And that was a nice move, because it's a, it makes, it fulfills our responsibility to be screening for that, not just responding when someone brings it up. So it was a good strategic move.
I think it takes away subjectivity for students, because previously, teachers were going to say, GABs, some kids should take it.
Yep.
But like I said, I don't think we've talked about it.
Yep.
The change.
Yep, yep.
And we did have these families last year, we're using the policy that Lori Wigg developed, we're utilizing the COGET and all the acceleration pieces.
Yep. Yep. Good question.
Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, Bill.
So, Mrs. Hesch, I noticed that part of our report is that our students, I think you noted for us, there's twenty, was it twenty-seven percent?
I suppose half the students are receiving interventions.
Well, and that, recognizing that that was across the school, I think at a work session, we talked about this a little bit, where, you know, translating that into an actual number, which is something we don't always like to do, made it real for me in recognizing how many students twenty-seven percent is, and that it's great that we're at seventy-four percent or seventy-three percent proficiency, and that sounds really good, and we should be proud of that, and we should celebrate that. But recognizing that we still have some work to do is good as well. Then I think I heard you say that the goal for Eagle View is two percent improvement each year.
Incrementally moving forward.
Incrementally moving forward. Does that mean it will take us almost twelve years to close that gap?
No.
Or, or, or is there a statistical piece here?
There's...
Okay.
When you look at percentages between seventy and eighty percent, we can grow that to six percent. So we want it to be realistic with movement forward. So I think you'll see that incrementally grow faster. The math at eighty-six percent, once you reach the higher eighties and nineties, growing more than one or two percent a year will be very difficult.
Right.
So the hope, honestly, is that reading, we've actually set our sights on next seventy-five, but we can actually accomplish far greater. And then once we get into the eighties, then we'll see the two and three incremental from that going forward.
Okay.
And when you talked about the twenty-seven percent, that's approximately two hundred and twenty-five students. It's almost one classroom per grade. And you put that into numbers and faces, we don't want any child to have that, to leave our building not prepared for the middle school.
Right. I think the other piece that I wanted to hear was that it's not going to take us a whole generation, you know, like a whole twelve years, to get to the point where we have reached a higher level of proficiency, and we're not leaving a whole classroom per grade behind. Do you know what I mean?
Absolutely. I'd like to ask a question.
So thank you for that. And just as a side note, this presentation, and Superintendent Lindholm, having our principals report in this format is so much more meaningful than some of the methods we have used in the past. So thank you for this. Thank you for the meaningful information. Mr. Lindholm, thank you for encouraging changes in how reports are submitted by our principals.
So is Fontis and Pennell, and then the STAR, those are two main drivers for information?
Fontis and Pennell would have been the best market assessment, brought in the literacy collaborative.
Okay, right.
So that's one piece. And STAR is what we use to replace NWDPA last year.
And they fall in spring?
NWDPA is fall winter, sorry. Fontis and Pennell's fall winter-spring.
So it's...
And so in STAR this year, we're doing it five times.
Okay.
Because under Mr. Johnston's leadership and curriculum leads, he's more familiar with that particular assessment, and he suggested it's more, we're able to see a better consistency if we do it more frequently.
And so will we hear from you again yet this year, do you think, or is it a next year thing?
If you'd like it, we'd gladly come back whenever you want.
Well, and you did stake out some goals in the ground, and I commend you for that, and I, you know, I, it's necessary and appreciated. And I'm not trying to put pressure on you, I'm just asking the question, that's all.
But Mr. Chair, is relevant and available for you next year?
Mr. Chair, I think it would make sense, it's just my two cents, to do this in the summer again, just because with the data, the way, especially the reading data.
Sure, and if it flows better.
And if it's in the spring, and it'd be a nice, or at least you have enough data to look at, because otherwise we're looking at a really small sampling of where you really should be seeing the growth.
And I should have said, before we start the next school year, probably would have clarified that.
But we have it there next year, June or July, whichever.
Go ahead. I think we should, we'll, we'll talk about the reporting format and the cycle, and what makes the most sense for you to be hearing things as a board. So you understand the, the concept behind a fall principal report rhythm. The school principals are charged with writing goals and plans for the year. And a lot of that goal writing happens in May and June, because all of the data does start coming in. And you have to answer the question first, well, how did we do this year with the goals we, we wrote for this year? And that, usually in April, when you've, there's a reason I fought hard for that April PD Day. It's because it's a great day for our principals to have all of their faculty in the room and do some aggregating of data and saying, did we meet our goals? What progress have we made in our adult learning goals? What progress have we made with our student learning goals? And then to pull all those pieces together in May, and then, as the principals know, we try really hard to pull retreats and leadership teams together in early June before everyone leaves us. And Eagle View did a great job. Their team was here for a couple of weeks, I think, in June. So we, we kind of pull it all together, and then, then there's the question, do we want And then, then there's the question, do we want to have a report in June? Or do we report in the fall right away? And, and we can swing either way. What might be really relevant for our chair and I, Mr. Earholz and I to do is to sit and look at the spring calendar. And are there slices of the reports you hear tonight, October, it is October, October, November, and December? Are there slices of those that you want to feedback loop on in April, May that maybe are a deeper dive into, say, the intervention team at Eagleview and what they've done? Let's just dive into that for 20 minutes. Or let's dive into the personalized learning plan work that ships leading in, I don't know, March or April. So there might be deep dives that we want to think about. I'm throwing out an idea, and let's just process it, Mr. Chair, as the year goes on, about what makes sense for the board. And I do want to compliment Melissa. This is nicely done, and I appreciate the ties into our strategic plan. I also appreciate the tie Director Wallene into the, that 25% or 26th or 27% at each grade level who are not meeting proficiency. That should gnaw at us. That should be what keeps us awake at night. If it doesn't, I question why we're in this. These are, these are people's children who aren't at grade level. And how we respond to that. If we had a magic bullet, it'd already, it'd already be here and we'd have it. It wouldn't be the topic of debate nationwide. But what we do have is, I think, under Melissa's leadership, we have a staff that's dialed in on that question. And, and they're having good rigorous debate around it and learning. And that's the culture shift that eventually gets to getting it done. Because they're the experts. And if they've bought into wrestling with the question, I think what you were talking about, the buy-in, then, then you're doing your job as a board. And, and now we let her work her magic. And thank you for the update. It's much appreciated.
Anything else? I should have asked this during your report, Superintendent Lindholm, but, you know, we've got Marzano, you know, we're dealing with the teachers, we're dealing with the student improvement plans. And the digital curricular library, I mean, how are we coming with that? I mean, I don't want to just open a 20-minute can of worms.
Sure, the only, the quick answer is slowly and methodically. And as I've said all along, this is a 20-20 vision. So it's going to take us time. And when we dedicate three half-days each contract year to that, and then have our curriculum leads working in the summer and doing some other things, it just takes time. So is it, how's it coming? It's coming on track, on schedule right now. And I would say it's, it's something to celebrate. But it just takes a lot of time. If you want to put it in the perspective, how many subjects do our elementary teachers teach? You know, so which ones should they work on on any given day? And so if we have three half-days, you know, it, it just takes time.
Right.
So.
It was a general answer.
Yep.
Or a general question. Anything else from anyone? Thank you very much. We do appreciate your efforts and your staff's efforts, obviously. Absolutely. We're done. So we're done, eh?
We, with reports, we are, yes.
Oh, I thought we were done.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to number five, consent agenda. Although board action is not required, all items listed are considered to be routine and will be acted on by one motion with no separate discussion. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will or may be moved for separate consideration. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Derek?
Sir.
Kim? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Here with me for a second here. Okay, that brings us to number six, action items. And under number A is a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building referendum bonds. I am looking for a member to introduce the following resolution. Well, thank you very much, Kurt.
Resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building refunding bonds. The result, I'm sorry. The resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school building refunding bond series 2015A, incventing and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of the Minnesota statutes, section 126(c)(55) to guarantee the payment of the principal interest on these bonds. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district number 186, Beagles Public Schools, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, bond authorization. The school board has determined that it is necessary and expedient to issue $10,560,000 of general obligation school building refunding bond series 215A. Number two, sale. The district, the district has retained Aylers and Associates, Inc. in Roseville, Minnesota, as its independent municipal advisor for the bonds. Aylers is authorized to solicit proposals in accordance with Minnesota statutes, section 475.60 subdivision 2.9. In the issuance of the bonds is approved, if the issuance of the bonds is approved, the school board shall meet at the time and place specified in the official statement to receive and consider proposals for the purchase of the bonds. Number three, official statement, negotiating the sale. Aylers is authorized to prepare and distribute an official statement and to open, read, and tabulate the proposals for presentation to the board. Number four, Minnesota School District Credit Enhancement Program. Subparagraph A, the district is hereby, the district hereby covenants and obligates itself to notify the commissioner of education of the potential default in the payment of principal interest on the quote "bonds" unquote, and to use the provisions of Minnesota statutes under section 126(c)(55) to guarantee the payment of principal interest on the bonds when due. The district further covenants to deposit with the registrar or any successor paying agent three days prior to the date of which the payment is due in an amount sufficient to make that payment or to notify the commissioner of education that it will be unable to make all or a portion of that payment. The registrar for the bonds is authorized and directed to notify the commissioner of education if it becomes aware of a potential default in the payment of principal interest on the bonds or if on the date, on the date, two business days prior to the date a payment is due on the bonds, there are insufficient funds to make that payment on deposit with the registrar. The district understands that as a result of its covenant to be bound by the provision of Minnesota statutes, section 125(c)(55), oh, 126(c)(55). The provisions of that section shall be binding as long as any bonds of this issue remain outstanding. Subparagraph B, the district further covenants to comply with all procedures now and hereafter established by the Departments of Management and Budget and Education of the state of Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 126(c)(55) subdivision, subdivision 2c. And otherwise, to take such actions as is necessary to comply with that section, the chair, clerk, superintendent, or business manager is authorized to execute any applicable Minnesota Department of Education form.
Thank you very much, Kim. I believe we can have discussion on this. And so we will, if we do.
Ms. Max, can I answer any questions?
Sure. And yeah, Jenny, please, thank you, Ms. Max. To be formal here. Anyone have any questions? Which is favorable for the district?
Yes.
And again, you know, we've gotten a lot of information on bond refunding from you, and thank you very much. So we are looking at initial projected savings of?
Approximately $670,000 for around, for at least five years.
Five years. So for, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just thinking a little over $100,000 a year in savings.
Right.
Interest savings.
And so that's why we feel it's prudent at this time to take this action, correct? Yes, Kurt.
In the, in the amount scheduled, doing it in one tranche is in the context, because these are all existing bonds. We're not separating or segregating. Aylers is promoting at least as one tranche, correct?
Yes, we're taking two separate bond issuers that are current now, 2006A and 2007A.
That's what I'm getting at, because I knew there were two separate. We're gonna try to get them on the same.
Come on, on one issue, one cost. This shows all that.
Makes it stronger, thank you.
And just, you know, for the record or for my benefit, what are the two? What are they involved? What did we borrow money for?
They were for the Eagleview, for the Eagleview fund that we find it's one time prior already.
Okay.
And it's just the remaining balance, that's not the bonds.
All right.
Just with the press here, Mr. Chair, I'd like to.
Yeah, absolutely, sorry.
Make sure we commend Ms. Max and Aylers and others for being prudent with our taxpayer dollars and taking steps to make sure we're, we're saving interest on this. So thank you for your work.
I have no further questions. Anyone else? We've been over this two or three times. So, and we have had a for-the-record statement, so.
Yep.
Jenny, thank you very much.
So we have a roll call.
Yeah, we're doing a roll call. We are going to go to Kim.
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. I'm not sure of my verbiage here, but the motion passes. Correct?
Correct.
Is that how I should state that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That leads us to B, Set Truth and Taxation Public Meeting. This public meeting must be held between the dates of November 24th, 2015, and December 28th, 2015. The recommendation is to set the Truth and Taxation Public Meeting for 6:00 PM, Monday, December 21st, 2015. That would be before a board meeting?
Correct.
The regular board meeting will follow at 7:00 PM.
Correct.
I'm looking for a motion to set the Truth and Taxation Public Meeting to be held Monday, December 21st, 2015, beginning at 6:00 PM.
So moved. Second.
Valerie and Kim. Is there any discussion?
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so normally we have our regular business meetings, board meetings at 6:00 PM. Is there some reason why we went and do the Truth and Taxation meeting at 5? Or do we need a whole hour? Just curious.
It's a valid question.
That's a good question.
We're not allowed to.
Oh.
By statute, it has to be 6:00 PM or 7:00.
Okay.
And that's a good answer. There you go, I love that answer.
Okay.
I would extend, I would have known that answer, too.
Okay, so does statute require us to allocate a full hour for the meeting?
It could be 6:30 or whatever.
Okay.
I guess just remember too that it's good to have maybe one more.
Yes, yep. And leading on from that, be it known that I will be gone from December 17th to December 28th, thank goodness, on a family vacation. So I'm going to ask for somebody else not only to fill in at that meeting, but our vice chair to run the regular board meeting that day. Okay, so I do appreciate that. We do appreciate that. Okay, any other discussion?
Just for clarification, this motion is to set Truth and Taxation at 6:00 PM. It's not, it doesn't set the time, starting time for the regular board meeting, so we can still adjust that.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So then could we just have a note to post when we post that regular board meeting? That it's immediately following the close of Truth and Taxation?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what we're going to have on our agenda if it's going to be a real long meeting. But we've all kind of gotten accustomed to a 6 o'clock start time instead of a 7 o'clock start time.
Yep, yep.
So I don't know what the resolution is, but I know that as we move forward, Superintendent Lindholm
Will work on that.
Will be in communication with us.
Yep.
So I'm looking for now a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, this is, uh, action item C, donations for October 19th, 2015. I've got it, I think I've got it. Did we have an addition? These are, oh, no, no, sorry.
Another page in here.
I'm confused as heck. So yes, you're right, I'm missing that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
$400 by Pequot Lakes and Breezy Points Lions Club.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations as presented.
Okay.
We don't have a motion on the table.
Oh. So we're kind of losing it as we go on here, so.
I'll make the second.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Do we have discussion? I'm just asking.
Now you read it for us.
Yep. Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
$400, Pequot Lakes Breezy Point Lions Club High School for the use of high school student council activities. $200 Pelican Lakes Conservation Club for GLAPA. $2,249 in the form of a grant, Five Wings Arts Council. Designated use would be the Pequot Lakes Community Theater, Cheaper by the Dozen Production. $6,816 by the Chicago Community Foundation. This is an anonymous fund to be used for GLAPA. And then 40 toothbrushes and 40 tubes of toothpaste, Pequot Lakes Dental for early childhood programs. And I would just like to thank each and every one of these donations and, and the recipients.
Any discussion?
Go ahead, Susan.
The $6,816 for GLAPA is a yearly thing. And so that's.
It's wonderful. Wonderful.
An amazing.
Yes. And I have no idea what the Chicago Community Foundation is, but we are forever in their debt, obviously. Um, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Before I come completely unhinged here and embarrass myself? Okay. So, that leads us to.
A vote.
Oh, yes. I need a vote. Hang on, just let me finish, please. A vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Announcements and meeting dates, which is where I went wrong here. So I buried that sheet too somehow. Do you have them?
Yeah, why don't I read them off?
Go for it.
Because I also have a couple of questions that pertains to this item. Our next, our scheduled meetings are November 2nd, we have a work session. November 16th, we have a regular board meeting. And then in December, on December 7th, we are scheduling a special board, a work session and a special board meeting, tentatively addressing our 2015 audit. And then on Monday 20, December 21st, truth and taxation will be at 6:00 PM, and the board meeting will be following that truth and taxation meeting at a time, we'll probably pull it, publish that closer to 6:30 or something like that. Wow, that's interesting.
That's amazing.
I do have a, so that's all the dates we'll read for upcoming meetings, but a question for our board members. Do we want to take time now to look at a holiday social for the board and just have that on our calendars before we walk out of the room?
Sure.
So we've got kind of four dates, the Lindholm house is open, and they're the two weekends, December 4th, 5th, and then December 11th, 12th. So is there a date that we can have consensus for most of us to be able to make it?
11th, 12th, we will be at the Nutcracker on Sunday, all the weekend.
Okay. So I have no idea what that even is. So December 4th or 5th, is that, does that one of those not work for folks?
It doesn't work for me.
No? Okay.
But I mean, just because it doesn't work for us, doesn't mean.
Yep.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I can make either weekend work.